Good evening, everyone. Tonight is Tuesday, July 7, 2020. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Fitchburg City Council meeting. Please be advised that FATV is cutting out the audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. With that, I would like to ask Councillor Fleming to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America. And to the Republic of which is.
The one nation undergone on indivisible with liberty and justice.
Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the roll call?
The following councillors have logged in and are present for tonight's meeting. President Kusmerik, Councillor Boeschmann, Councillor Dina Tally, Councillor Fleming, Councillor Green, Councillor Schultz, Councillor Squallia, Councillor Van Hazenga, Councillor Walsh, and Councillor Zarella.
Councillor Zarella with a motion relative to remote participation.
I move suspension of any rules of this council or our parliamentary authority that would otherwise conflict with either the remote participation format or with the state guidelines on remote participation in the time of the COVID-19 pandemic.
I have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, by roll call vote.
Councillor Fleming?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz? Councillor Schultz?
I think he's muted.
Councillor Squallia?
Yay.
Councillor Van Hazenga?
Yes.
Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
Councillor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kusmerik?
Yes.
Councillor Boeschmann?
Yay, yes.
Councillor Dina Tally?
Yes.
It is unanimous. Carries. We had a public forum advertised up until new time today. We had no registrants for public forum for this meeting. We also had no appointment meeting prior to this evening's council meeting. We'll now hear a report from the Committee on Records, Councillor Squallia.
We have reviewed the records and they appear to be in order.
I make a motion we accept.
Second. I have a motion and seconds. We'll adopt this by unanimous consent unless there is objection. Seeing none. The Records Committee report has been accepted. We now have communications. I'm going to mute everyone here. We have communications from his honour, the mayor. We have one letter of reappointment for Dan H. Milot as a member of the Board of Registers, term to expire April 1, 2023. That will be referred to the Appointments Committee. We have three additional letters of appointments. The first for Anthony C. Marama is acting chief engineer, fire chief, to fill the retirement of Fire Chief Kevin D. Roy to begin on July 1, 2020, until successor is appointed and qualified, but not later than September 1, 2020. Councillors, this is simply a communication. This does not have to be referred to the Appointments Committee. So we'll place this on file in the city clerk's office in way of the reading. The the second is a letter of appointment for Anthony C. Marama to the position of chief engineer and fire chief to begin on July 27, 2020. That will be referred to the fini- to the Appointments Committee. And lastly, we have a letter of communication for appointment of Alice E. Hillman as a member of the Board of Registers, term to expire April 1, 2023. That too will be referred to the Appointments Committee. We also had a communication from the Firefighters Association Local 3128. That will be placed on file on the city clerk's office. And then we have a communication from Ann Servante, City Treasurer, and Tom Skorowski, Executive Director of Community Development and Planning, regarding a completed parking study. And the request here is that this be sent as a communication to both the Economic Development and Public Safety Committees. And I would ask that those committees work with Mr. Skorowski and Mr. Rantes to schedule a meeting. Or either individual or joint. I'll I'll leave that to the respective chairs to decide if they want a single or joint meeting. And then next, we have a communication from Tom Skorowski regarding petition 2920. That was the updated zoning ordinances, just a clean copy for councillors to refer to. We'll have the the actual ordinance readings coming to us in future meetings. We have a communication from Fitchburg Retirement System. That too will be placed on file in the city clerk's office. Communication from the Pension Reserve Investment Management Board. A communication from the Monty Tech School Committee regarding COVID-19 state funding. That was a resolution that they passed. And also an annual report from the city clerk for the year 2019, all of which will be placed on file in the city clerk's office. Next, we have a report from the Planning Board. Meeting of May 27, 2020 for 12920, councillor Paul Boeschmann to accept Beach Street Lane as a street within the city of Fitchburg. This was not granted by the by the Planning Board. So I would ask that we have a a motion to accept the communication and report from the Planning Board.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the the report from the Planning Board. Unless there is objection, we'll adopt this by unanimous consent. Seeing none, it is adopted. Next, we have a Public Works Committee meeting of June 30, councillor Fleming.
Muted.
Didn't mute myself. Okay, thank you. So we met on June 30. And we did 101 petition number 10120, councillor Paul Boeschmann to install a berm at 88 Newtonville Ave to mitigate water damage. That was granted. 10220, councillor Paul Paul Boeschmann to request Unitil to apply new asphalt around poles 12 to 26 on Franklin Road up to Oak Hill Road. That was held. 12920, councillor Boeschmann to accept Beach Street Lane as a street within the city of Fitchburg. It was also referred to the City Property Committee and Planning Board, and we voted to hold that. 13020, councillor Paul Boeschmann to petition that Unitil repair the sidewalks where new poles have been added for the area of Woodland and Pratt Street and Pratt Road, poles 5, 6, 7, 8, and 23 with asphalt or cement, as well as the poles at Beach Street and Pratt Road. That was held. Petition 14420, councillor Paul Boeschmann to petition the Unitil repair the sidewalk in front of pole number 27 on Pratt Road. The guide wire has raised the sidewalk in this area. That was ordered to behold, held. 14920, councillor Paul Boeschmann to request Unitil repair to repair the sidewalk at pole number 11 on Plymouth Street. The sidewalk is washing out. That was held. 04620, councillors Marisa Fleming and Marcus Dina Tally to declare Atheist Street a public way. That was also referred to the Property Committee, and we voted to hold that. And 12619, councillor Joe Caddy to correct water problems at 15 Thurston Place, and that was granted.
Councillor Zarella speaking on the on the report.
Yes, thank you. I would like to make a motion that we accept the report and enact the recommendations of the Public Works Committee with respect to all items other than 12920.
Motion.
Do I have a second on motion?
One second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the Public Works Committee recommendations on all items excluding. Excuse me, councillor, that was one.
12920.
12920. I have a motion and seconds. Madam Clerk, if you can conduct by roll call vote.
Councillor Fleming?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Squallia?
Yay.
Councillor Van Hazenga?
Yes.
Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
Councillor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kusmerik?
Yes.
Councillor Boeschmann?
Yes.
Councillor Dina Tally?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
12920 is councillor Paul Boeschmann to accept Beach Street Lane as a street within the city of Fitchburg. This was referred to the Planning Board, City Property and Public Works. Councillor Zarella, the floor is yours.
In light of the unfavorable recommendation by the Planning Board, I would move that we pull this item out of both the property and Public Works Committees and act on it tonight.
Second.
What what recommendation or course of action are you asking to take with it, councillor Zarella?
If the vote to pull it out of committee succeeds, I would then recommend that the council give it leave to withdraw in light of the Planning Board's recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Zarella. I have a motion and second to pull from 12920 from their respective committees and put before the full body. I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, we'll do this by roll call vote as well.
Councillor Fleming?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Squallia?
Yay.
Councillor Van Hazenga?
Yes.
Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
Councillor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kusmerik?
Yes.
Councillor Boeschmann?
I'll be a fool to say no. Yes.
Councillor Dina Tally?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
The matter is now before this body, councillor Zarella.
I would move that we give the matter leave to withdraw.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Speaking on the motion, councillor Boeschmann.
I'd like to say one thing. I understand how everybody feels about Beach Street Lane. And I made myself well known at the DPW meeting we had. My only problem is that what I would like to see the city do is I believe they should, for short change, short money, $12,000, they should just go and pave that since the trucks are going to be already in that area. And then then take the money out of free cash. We blow $12,000 some years. So to help those residents residents down there, I would like to see the city take free cash and pave their street. For them, because they can't, the bottom of their cars are hitting the ruts in the road. But that's the only reason why. And I understand what the Planning Board said, and I understand how my fellow councillors feel. Because I even vote against accepting streets too. So I'm not I'm not bitter about that, but I'd like to see us take some free cash to help those people that are on that street because the road's really, really bad. The bottom of the cars are hitting the bottom because it's like an atrium. The ruts are in the road and the middle's way up. Okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Councillor, well, I I agree with the intent, and I'd love to see all of our private roads and ways accepted and paved. The reality, it comes down to a budgetary matter. You know, we we just simply don't have the funding to accept, you know, more than 20 plus miles of road from private way into public ways in our city. You know, throughout, you know, war four, and quite frankly, all of the wards, there are scores of private roads that all deserve to be paved and and maintained, you know, by the city, and it would be unfair to all of the other residents living on private ways for us to pick one street over another. And quite frankly, we know that we don't have the resources to do all of them. So I think I certainly understand where your petition is coming from and and sympathize with the residents on those roads. I would love for them to to have paved roads. But unfortunately, again, we don't have the resources. Councillor Dina Tally, speaking on the motion.
For you, Mr. President, to 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 Mr. Boeschmann, is it a small stretch of Beach Street Lane that needs to be done, or is it the whole thing?
Actually, the whole thing.
So there isn't like a section of it we can carve out? I'm asking because that machine we bought, the coal planer with skid steer, the skid steer with coal planer that they've been using, I know it was used on Walton Street, it was used on, I think it was Townsend, they've used it several times where they will cut out a section of a really bad portion of the road and and smooth it out and pave it. DPW does that. I want to say it's probably, the ones I've seen are like 20 or 30 feet. I don't know if that's something that they can look into doing because that doesn't require Chapter 90 or or free cash. That's just part of their normal schedule with the with the machine that we procured. So I don't know if that's a matter for Gary and Commissioner Bossaneto and Superintendent Whittington to add that to its list. Because I'm sure they have a lengthy list that they're they're planning to do with that new machine we bought last year. So maybe not the whole world, but maybe they can do part of it in lieu of paving the whole thing out of Chapter 90. Just a suggestion. I I don't. Maybe go that avenue, see if they can use that machine for for that that stretch.
I'll do that. I'll ask Gary. Thank you.
Yep.
Councillor Schultz?
Yeah, I spoke to DPW Commissioner Bossaneto last week, councillor Dina Tally, and he assured me that he's going to try to do something about Beach Street Lane. He thinks he can, he can work it in at some point. With that, probably with that machine. Thank you.
Councillor Green?
I'll yield, I'll yield to councillor Dina Tally to follow up.
Councillor Dina Tally?
Just on that, I, so this this abuts obviously Beach Street, and they're going to be doing significant work on Beach Street. Maybe they, I know councillor Schultz just just mentioned this, but it makes sense to me now that it's probably cost effective for them to either repave that little stretch because it's off of Beach Street and that's already getting paved and redone, or they use the machine for that piece. But either way, it probably should get done because the abutting road, Beach Street's getting completely redone. So why not just kill two birds with one stone on that? So yeah. Thank you for that for that input. I didn't think of that.
Councillor Green?
My only question and or concern is, is the city then going to be paving a private street? I mean, we just denied it as a public street. And now we're talking about paving a private street. So I I want to make sure that we're clear that we have not accepted the street as a Fitchburg-owned street. But yeah, here we're talking about paving a private street or a private lane or a private road.
Councillor, I'd suggest that coal planning is more maintenance than than actually paving. So I I think typically what DPW has tried to do in the past is to maintain, provide some basic basic maintenance to some of these private ways so that they are passable both to residents as well as emergency vehicles as as city services may need to go to these these particular streets and residences. So you raise a good point, though. I think we need to, we need to be carefully monitoring how and what kind of resources get spent on on private ways because we know certainly our public roads need a great deal of attention as well. We also have councillor Fleming.
Okay, I'm just just curious, sort of on the same lines as councillor Green was speaking. So if we have several other private roads in Fitchburg, all they have to do is call DPW to have that planer go on their roads, because I've had a few private ways that have tried to get things done and were unable to get them done. They ended up having to do it themselves. So are we going to open a can of worms by allowing this, or is this going to be something that all private ways are going to be able to do?
Councillor Fleming, right now, I mean, this is, you raise a good point, and I think that's the exact reason that this petition that the Planning Board gave this leave to withdraw and that councillor Zarella moved that we accept the Planning Board's recommendation and give this leave to withdraw because we are opening a can of worms by selecting which roads get investment from public funds. And, you know, I think we'll leave it, I I prefer to leave it to our DPW Commissioner to dictate where and what roads need, you know, need the maintenance for essential services and for residents to be able to access. I think it's our job as councillors to bring it to his attention and to the DPW's attention and for them to make the informed decision about where best to allocate those funds and resources. With that, I have councillor Schultz.
Yeah, I was just going to add that it's not a very long road, and there's one, there's actually only two homes on the road, and the one down at the end of the road the city owns, and without a passable road, it's going to be difficult for the city to to actually be able to to sell that property. So that's, I guess that's another consideration, at least to make it passable at this point.
So I have, I have a motion and second. We'll do this by roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Councillor Fleming?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Schultz?
Yes.
Councillor Squallia?
Yay.
Councillor Van Hazenga?
Yes.
Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
Councillor Zarella?
Yes.
President Kusmerik?
Yes.
Councillor Boeschmann?
No.
Councillor Dina Tally?
Yes.
That's nine to one.
Nine to one, the motion carries. Next, we have a public hearing, 12620, Unitil to petition for three new pole locations approximately 935 feet west of Williams Road. On the north side of McIntyre Road is outlined in the enclosed petition. I now declare the hearing resumes. Councillure, this continued from June 16, 2020. And with us this evening, we have Mr. D. from Unitil. Mr. D., I will let you speak to the item before us, and the floor is yours.
Okay, yeah, good evening. Sorry I missed the last meeting. I couldn't connect here from home. So thank you for the second chance. The Unitil is looking to get permission to install three poles on the north side of McIntyre Road. And that's a section of McIntyre Road between Williams Road and Alpine Road, Alpine Road. And there are four house, four new house lots going in up there. So we want to extend our electric lines three sections to serve those four house lots, four houses. And basically, that's about it.
Any questions from councillors? Councillor Boeschmann?
I have a question. On your map, on your print that you sent us, there's no possible way that from pole number four, we go underground and put everything under underneath the ground on that side of the street. The road's not that good already if we dug it up and we put the service under underneath the ground. On those four house lots that was up there, you get the machi- he has the machines up there already. Can you hear me?
If you could, if you could respond.
Yeah, I'm here. I mean, anything's possible. Of course, the developer is looking for the most cost-effective way, which would be setting three poles and not digging up in the road trench and putting conduit in, and I'm pretty sure it's all rocky ledge up there. So that that would be a lot more expensive for the developer. I mean, it's way out, way out in the woods there, and it's overhead already. So they basically, we're going to keep the same same scenario, overhead. They're all going to be on the same side of the street.
No, yeah, you're right. I understand what you're saying. I was up there and I looked. But I understand what you're saying about rocky and ledgy. But you also put cellars in those brand new homes. It's not like you didn't dig. And the only reason why I say that is that I noticed Unitil going around and they're knocking down, they're cutting down a lot of trees. Literally, a lot of trees to protect their lines, which I don't blame you. But the city has to start somewhere, and to me, to take from, go from pole and go across the street 15 feet, it looks like, because I was up there, maybe it's 20 feet, and dig a trench on the side and put underground service. I think it's a lot better and luck neater and nicer for everybody. And I think the new homeowners who are buying these homes will prefer to see that with their wires underground. I made a mistake on Canton Street, and I I called the president up right after that meeting, and he can verify it, that I was totally against it, but it was kind of late because I couldn't sign in on the on Zoom that night to speak. I didn't know how to do it that good. But I really think it's time that we change and stop putting some of these services, especially here, where you got four of them going in right, they're not even that far apart. They're only half an acre. One big trench going one way, one way, and one way, you're all done. And and if you look on the map, I believe on Alpine Road, you're going to have a lot more houses up in that area. And I know Alpine Loans get overhead, but I really, I'm not going to vote for 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 three or four new poles. I prefer to see going underground. I think it'll be a lot nicer. Environmental impact is underground. It's a lot neater. And it's basically less of a headache for you. And according to what you sent us, you're even asking, if I read this right, it says right here, also for permission to place and maintain underground lateral manholes, manholes, cables, and wires. That's what it says right there, what I got in my package. So I really prefer that we should really go underground here because these houses are not that far away from one another, and I think it would do a great. It would make that area still rural instead of trying to make it look like the city. It would keep the beauty of the neighborhood better than seeing clotheslines hanging around, and so the birds can sit on them. So I'd rather see them sit on trees and the squirrels can't eat them. So I'm not going to vote in favor of that. I'd rather see them go underground. I don't think the cost is that much more, maybe a little bit more, but I really think the homeowners would prefer to see the service underground than above ground and have an arm sticking out to catch the wire from the from the brand new homes that they are paying for. That's my feeling.
Typically, you know, we do underground service to new developments. If there's a new development going in off of there with a new road or common driveway or something, you know, it's usually underground, but going up the road like this, you know, it's more cost effective and to do the do the overhead. I don't know, the houses are already built and I think they're already sold. So I don't think there's a problem with the homeowner is trying to, wanting to buy them with overhead. Because they know that that's what they're getting, or at least they build a, build a nose.
Thank you, Mr. D. Councillor Fleming?
Yeah, I'd like to have an idea of what the cost is to put underground utility as opposed to the the poles, because I really like the idea of underground. You know, everything underground as well. So I mean, everybody wants to be cost effective, but sometimes in the long run, it is going to be less expensive to do it underground. So what is the price variance from overhead to underground?
Yeah, that wasn't something I really looked into. You know, I talked to the builder and he's, you know, just wanted to go overhead. And I mean, it's probably three times the cost of, you know, overhead going underground. You know, it really is a lot, lot more to do. I mean, if we were going up the street, I don't know, 1,000 feet or so, maybe, maybe it wouldn't be as expensive because now you're getting more houses, but you know, if you if you get four houses and you're only going so many, I don't know, I just, I didn't really.
Do we have a ballpark?
I don't have a ballpark.
No ballpark either. So do we really know it's going to be three times more?
Typically, yeah. Uh, typically, yeah. Um, when we do underground versus overhead. Because now you got the trenching and the conduit and all the labor and the sand and the, and the paving. I mean, it's just a lot more involved. You know, you got the boxes, the transformer pads, and everything else that, that goes with it.
Okay, I'm still not sure how I'm gonna vote on this, so, okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Counselor Van Hasenga.
Um, I think I agree with Counselor Boishman's intent. Um, I think underground utilities do present better, and they do have a lot of advantages, but they are certainly more expensive. And, uh, just the quick Googling I've done supports Mr. D's estimate. It's typically about two to four times as expensive to put the overhead utilities underground, and in highly urbanized areas, it can be ten times or more. So, I think this is a good goal to have, and I think it's something to keep in mind, but for more concentrated areas, where this is a street that already has poles for half of it, in a rural area, I don't think this really makes sense. If this was a new sub-development with fifty homes and everything was planned out, absolutely, I think that makes good sense. But I think it's something we need a more, uh, concerted plan to address, and not just, um, hold up every, uh, poll application to demand under, I think if this isn't something we would like to have in the city, that we need to work with the planning board to make it a requirement for subdivision approval or things like that, and have a more concerted policy, rather than look at it on a case-by-case basis like this. Because if you're gonna do it that way, I don't think this is a very advantageous one, being just, you know, four poles at the end of the street. Um, it doesn't really seem to make much more sense for that, so I will support this, uh, petition. Thank you.
Oh, I caught me mid-type. I was just gonna say disregard. I, Counselor Van Hasenga knocked it out of the park for me.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I concur with Counselor Deetally's, uh, statements. Counselor Van Hasenga said exactly what my line of thinking was, and, and said it much more, uh, particularly than I would have. So, thank you. Uh, Counselor Boishman, uh, speaking for the second time.
Yeah, we have to start somewhere. I'm not picking. You, you're talking about four houses. You're not talking about one, and I understand one, but you're talking about four houses. And, and you're gonna put up one, two, three, four poles or three poles? And then that, and you're gonna have them a hundred and ninety feet, a hundred and eighty feet, and a hundred and eighty feet, where you can put the thing underneath the ground? You, you're taking the beauty out of your, out of your, out of your country scenic roads to put wires up. And people that move out in that area move out there for a reason, because they want the beauty, they want nature. They don't want, they wouldn't want to see wires, and it, and I don't think if, if, even if they had an extra cost, I don't really think they would mind the extra cost, because all their service would be underground. So they could put a tree anywhere they wanted in their yard, if they wanted to put a tree, and even if they went up ninety feet up in the air, they don't have to worry about hitting that wires that are coming to their house. And, and I'll go back, you're taking the beauty out of a rural area. The beauty out of it. When I went on Alpine Road, and all you saw was a line of sticks going down with wires on it, I didn't see no beauty out there. Didn't, there was no beauty. Uh, but I understand, because there was only one house when they started. We're talking about four, and who knows, the next development may be five, because there's still a lot of land up there for sale. So when do you say no, and when do you say, you need thirty houses to go and say, yeah, we'll do it? What's wrong with one house at a time? That's my argument. I won't, I won't support this. I, I, I think we're making a big mistake. I think you're taking, you're trying to make the country look like the city. People wanna move out to the outskirts of their, of the city for that reason, and make, you see beauty. You see nature at its best, not city at its best, nature. And that's why they're out that way. That's how I feel. So I'm not gonna support this.
So I, I have a motion and second, uh, to, to accept one twenty-six twenty. Counselor, first, we need to close, uh, the public hearing. Uh, and then recognize the motions. Um, so, uh, anyone?
Make a motion to close a public hearing?
Is there anyone here wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Is there anyone here wishing to speak in opposition to the petition? If all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed. I now have a motion, uh, made by Counselor Green and a second made by, um, Counselor Van Hasenga to accept one twenty-six twenty. Uh, we'll do this by roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Fleming.
Um, yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hasenga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kuschmerich.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
No.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Deetally.
Yes.
That is ten to one.
Motion carries, uh, ten to one. Thank you, Mr. D, for joining us this evening.
Very much.
Also joining us this evening, uh, is Counselor, uh, Kucher, uh, joining us, thank you. Uh, next, we have, uh, Orders Finance. Uh, Counselors, uh, our, uh, auditor, uh, Brooks has requested suspension of the rules on one fifty-two up to and including one fifty-five, uh, one fifty-five twenty, uh, relative to items from last year's fiscal budget, uh, and transfers.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconds.
I have a motion, uh, and second for suspension of the rules on one fifty-two up to and including one fifty-five twenty. Uh, we'll do this by, uh, Counselor Zarella.
Oh, I just wanted to know, in the chat, it appears, uh, prior to that, Counselor Deetally moved to suspend all finance items.
I apologize, uh, Counselor Deetally, sorry about that. Uh, could I, uh, could I ask for that, uh, motion to be amended for suspension of the rules on all items, uh, before us this evening?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, so I have a motion and second for suspension of the rules on one fifty-two twenty up to and including, uh, one, I apologize, one fifty-eight twenty. Uh, we'll do this, uh, by, excuse me, suspension by roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Fleming.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Squalia.
Yay.
Counselor Van Hasenga.
Yes.
Counselor Walsh.
Yes.
Counselor Zarella.
Yes.
President Kuschmerich.
Yes.
Counselor Boishman.
Yay.
Yes.
Counselor Kucher.
Yes.
Counselor Deetally.
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Uh, so counselors, we can, uh, we can do these one at a time. I can read the, uh, unless there's another motion, I will, uh, read the corresponding, um, uh, order letter, uh, from the department head for each item. Beginning with one fifty-two twenty, order that there be in hereby is transferred from within the sum of five thousand dollars, seemed to be transferred from fire equipment and, uh, and repair to be transferred from fire, uh, sorry, to be transferred from fire equipment and repair gas and oil and credited to fire building maintenance and household.
Make a motion, will you?
Second.
I have a motion and second, uh, to accept one fifty-two twenty. Uh, we'll do this by roll call vote. Uh, Counselor Zarella, do we need to do a roll call vote on each individual item?
Uh, I don't personally believe that we do, uh, unless there is some item that would ordinarily require something other than a simple majority.
Madam Clerk, any disagreement here?
Yeah.
All right.
That's fine.
Counselors, we'll do this by unanimous consent. If there is, um, I'll, I'll pause extra long, just to make sure that if there are, uh, concerns, then we can do it by roll call vote. So I have a motion and second, uh, to accept one fifty-two twenty. Questions or concerns? All right, we'll accept this by unanimous consent. One fifty-three twenty, order that there be in hereby is transferred from within the sum of twenty thousand dollars, seemed to be transferred from water expenses, watershed maintenance and credited to regional water treatment facility expenses and heating fuel. And counselors.
To accept.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and second, uh, to accept. Uh, questions or concerns from counselors?
Well, I do have one concern. I, I talked to the, the city auditor, and I'll make it known that I just wanna make it known that we had a pretty mild winter last year. I told Kelvin Brooks that already. So, and I asked him some questions about all these transfers and that, and that, so, I'm gonna vote for it. But I just wanted to make it known, we had a mild winter. It wasn't a heavy winter or very cold. It was some days cold. A lot of days were average, so, for winters. So, that's all I wanna say. I'm watching that very carefully, these funds. That's it. That's it.
Unless there is any objection, we will accept one fifty-three twenty by unanimous consent. Seeing no objections, uh, it is accepted. Uh, one fifty-four twenty, order that there be in hereby is transferred from within the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars, seemed to be transferred from Monticujin Regional Vocational Technical School Assessment and credited to law, other expenses, damages, uh, persons and property. I have a, uh,
Motion is set.
I have a motion and second, uh, to accept one fifty-four twenty. Speaking on the motion, uh, we have, uh, Counselor, I believe the first counselor is Counselor Zarella. I apologize, Counselor Squalia.
Uh, yes, could Auditor Brooks just, um, clarify this a, a little more than, um, the, the line in the letter?
Okay, so this, this is a, a transfer from within the FY twenty-twenty budget. Uh, we had excess funds in the Monty Tech Assessment Account, because the amount we had originally budgeted was greater than what we ended up having to pay, uh, at the end. And I think that was because we set the budget in June. The state budget was set in July, August, and so they had, uh, given more money to Monty Tech. Our assessment went down. Uh, so that there is, it was about sixty-six thousand extra we had in that mine that we're using to fund these other two items. Uh, usually at the end of the year, there's a few housekeeping, uh, transfers that have to be done. The last two were like that. These next two are just, um, situations where we ran into costs that were a little bit higher than we'd expected for the year and needed to fill in. Uh, in this case, it's for the, uh, uh, a deductible on a claim. Uh, we're, Maya, who was our old carrier, uh, is saying that we owe this. We're challenging that and saying that we don't, because there are two claimants on the same claim, so there should only be one deductible. Um, and this is just putting the money there, so that if we, if in the end, we end up having to pay it, we're not taking it out of next year's budget. But we already have it available.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Counselor Zarella.
Uh, that was actually what I was going to elaborate on anyway. Thank you, Senator Brooks.
Uh, Counsel Green.
Um, I guess my only concern is where we don't have, where we don't know what budget will be moving forward. Are we going to run short, or we're just taking the excess that we previously budgeted for and just shifting it interdepartmentally into like the law department?
So, Counselor, this would otherwise appear as free cash, once free cash is certified, if we didn't spend it, so we're instead, uh, Counselor, Mr. Brooks, please correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, this would otherwise, um, so we're, we're transferring it into an account should that, should the expense from the twenty-twenty fiscal year arise, we have the funding already available. Otherwise, uh, the funding would, uh, would be transferred to free cash, and then we'd have to later appropriate it out of this year's budget.
I, I guess I, I guess I would like to see the expenses from this year in the law department. Because it seems like if we're running, I mean, if we're asking for twenty-five thousand out of this, but we've got, you said that we needed sixty-six thousand dollars, or that's just what was excess in this account?
The sixty-six thousand, what was excess in the Monty Tech Assessment Account?
Okay, so out of that sixty-six thousand, we're taking twenty-five thousand and applying it to the law department.
That is correct, and then the next order will be similar. We're taking another twenty out.
Okay, thank you. I'm all set now. Thank you for that clarification.
So I have, uh, a motion, uh, do I have a motion and seconds already before us, uh, to accept one fifty-four twenty. Uh, any objections? We'll take this by unanimous consent. All right, one fifty-four is adopted by unanimous consent. Uh, next, we have one fifty-five twenty, order that there be in hereby is transferred from within the sum of twenty thousand dollars, seemed to be transferred from Monticujin Regional Vocational Technical School Assessment and credited to airport expenses, electricity, and airport expenses, repair and maintenance of buildings.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and second, uh, to approve one fifty-five twenty. Speaking on the motion, Counsel Boishman.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping, and I'm praying that this is the end for the airport. Uh, every time I turn around, we just need a little bit more, we just need a little bit more, just need a little bit more. But then I go get Beach Street Lane paid, and we can't do it, but yet we do it for the rich and famous. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
I have a motion, uh, and second, uh, to, uh, adopt one fifty-five twenty. Unless there is objection, we'll adopt by unanimous consent. Uh, seeing, uh, an objection, Counselor Deetally, I apologize, was that to speak or, uh, objection to the, uh?
To, to speak.
Counselor Deetally, the floor is yours.
Um, you know, I, I can't, I can't let that last comment go, because, you know, when, when a comment is made like that, that we are, it, it's a very divisive comment that is riddled with inaccuracy. We are not taking care of the rich and famous. Um, the quote-unquote rich and famous pay property taxes into the city. This is another example where some people like to take shots at the council, at the city. We're pitting residents on Beach Street Lane with the airport sustainability. I will say this, and the counselor should know this, because he's on the finance committee. And the auditor can correct me if I'm wrong, but the auditor has made it clear, has, has the airport, that the deficits the airport is running are going into the next fiscal year, because the projects are not yet done. We already knew all this. This is not a secret. Um, and I hope the city will highlight all of the positives that are happening at the airport once it's finished, but I'll tell you, I'm sorry, everybody. I get very upset when I hear any one of us go, well, we're not gonna give money to Beach Street Lane, but we're gonna give money to this. Beach Street Lane, as was stated earlier, is a private roadway, so we can't give it any money. But we can, out of the kindness of our heart, because this is what the DPW has done in the past, for a private road, they could do some maintenance, like pothole filling, if it allows the road to be passable, and we all agreed in the last discussion to seek the DPW's assistance on helping those residents out. So I, I take a little bit of offense to the comment made that we're taking care of the rich and famous. It's, it's an absolutely ridiculous statement. And I'll tell you what, I'm the first one that wants this airport to go away from us with deficits, so I don't have to listen to the council for more to continuously attack it. Thank you.
I, Counselor, just, just in for the public, uh, this was accompanied by a letter from Peter Kettle, Kettle Interim, uh, Airport Manager, who's also joined with us this evening, so, uh, uh, manager of Kettle, I appreciate you always, uh, joining a three item, uh, that comes before this body. Uh, and it reads, Dear Mayor, uh, Deetally, I respectfully request an additional appropriation of funds for airport electricity, the amount of fifteen thousand dollars, and airport repair and maintenance of buildings, five thousand dollars, in particular for Hangar Ten, which we now have a sublease, uh, tenant in occupancy. Electricity costs at the airport were higher than anticipated in, uh, and budget. Uh, and we have addressed this in the FY twenty-twenty-one budget proposal. Repair and maintenance of buildings is also higher than, uh, budget, uh, due to necessary work completed on Hangar Ten to bring, uh, the building up to a good standard, to attract, um, a new customer to the airport, bringing with him, uh, an eleven million dollar business. We have also repaired unforeseen main door seals on both hangars, twelve and thirteen, thereby keeping pigeons out of Hangar. Um, and there are deposits on expensive paint jobs on airplanes, which we could be responsible for if damaged by the chemicals that they deposit. Thank you, uh, regards, Peter E. Kettle, Interim Airport, um, Manager. Uh, so I'll add there that it's both, uh, a protection of our existing, um, assets and resources. I'll add that, you know, w- we have a new interim airport manager, uh, and he's an incredible job, clearing out a backlog, um, of, of maintenance issues and budgetary issues, and he's really, uh, you know, I'm confident that he is working with our, um, with our auditor, uh, to ensure that the accurate, uh, that we've accurately budgeted for energy and other, uh, maintenance costs in the year ahead. Um, and so he's inheriting a budget that, uh, he did not build, uh, or account for. Uh, and I think he's done a wonderful job to ensure that he's operating within that budget. Uh, additionally, uh, we're seeing here that we're, he's Additionally, we're seeing here that he's asking for us to spend $5,000 to ensure that our new $11 million business coming into the airport, as well as some additional city property as well maintained. $5,000 to protect an $11 million investment seems well worth it. With that said, I have a motion and second. Unless there is objection, we will adopt 15520 by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is adopted by unanimous consent. Next, we have, Counselors, just so you know, I'm unmuting you, so you can make motions while I read the next three items. We have 15620, ordered that the city of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the Power Options Inc. grants in the approximate amount of $1,500 for the purpose of said grant, which is purchasing personal protective equipment for the city.
Motion to accept?
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Zarella?
No, actually, I was just going to move that we accept 156 through 15820.
Would the counselors made the motion and seconded be amenable to such a change?
Yes.
Yes.
I have a motion and second to accept 156 up to and including 15820. Counselors, I'm going to read 157 and 158 for the public. 15720, ordered that the city of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Health and Human Services Department of Mental Health Grant in the approximate amount of $49,365 for the purpose of said grant, which is to support a police-based jail diversion program for individuals with mental illness or emotional disturbances. And 15820, ordered that the city of Pittsburgh hereby approves the expenditure of funds from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation Aeronautics Division in the approximate amount of $9,000 for the purpose of said grant, which is to install two doors, closures in the lobby of the administration building. I have a motion and second. Speaking on the motion, Counselor Boishman? Sir, you're muted.
Counselor, you're muted.
Counselor, you're muted.
I'm muted. Okay, I'm sorry about that. On 157-20, I'm all in favor of that. I think we need to do better on that. I agree with that one 100%. But on 158, I only got one thing to say. I think our government, our government is making everybody afraid. Every time I turn around, it's something about getting everybody all worked up. Now, they want to put cat locks on there, not cat locks, but locks on the doors on the airport. I think we're going overboard here. We're going an extra kill, just to waste our taxpayers' money. I mean, really? That's all I want to say. I think we're just going overboard. That's all I have to say about that issue.
I have Counselor Zarella, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to note that, first of all, this is $9,000, not $90,000. And it's door closers. I don't, I don't see that as an issue of paranoia or anything, so much as just a necessary piece of equipment that currently is not, you know, in service.
I have Counselor Green. Counselor Green, you're on.
Thank you. I would just like to note that this is already a grant that has been applied for and granted, and all we're doing is just accepting the petition for the grant. So I think of it, again, through Mr. Kettle, he's already done his work. He's already applied for the grant. The grant's already been awarded. We don't have to worry about anything to do with it. It's a grant that we don't control, so I say let him use the money for what he's needed at the airport. Thank you.
I have Counselor Squalia?
Thank you. Airport manager Kettle, the $9,000, that's 100% grant, will that cover all the labors and labor and materials?
Counselor, we have a motion and second. So with a motion and second, we'd have to rescind the motion and go and put the item back before us to allow Mr. Kettle to speak to the item.
Okay. I'm under the impression that this grant will cover 100% of the labor and materials for this project, that it is required for buildings to have closers in exterior doors like that, so.
You're correct. I believe there is no city, additional city contribution required to this grant of labor or resources.
Thank you.
I have a, and Counselor Deenatali, the floor is yours.
Yeah, I read this as like a change order. This is just an addition. I mean, they, the state and the feds paid for that admin building for the most part. So this sounded to me like a change order, where this is just an addition to that. And since they've paid well over 90% of the costs, they're just giving us the money to tie up some loose ends. So as Counselor Green said earlier, this is a grant. We can debate the merits of the grant, but, I mean, State Aeronautics Division's giving us the money. We can't turn it down. You know, when it comes to grants, as we all know, they're specifically earmarked for specific uses, so.
We lost Counselor Deenatali. We'll give him one moment. We're not getting him back. That said, counselors, I have a motion and second on the floor to adopt 156 up to and including 15820. Counselor Deenatali, you're back. We lost you during your statement, if you'd like to, or we can just continue.
Nope, all set.
Okay. I have 156 up to and including 15820. Unless there is objection, we'll adopt all three by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, 156 up to and including 158 has been adopted. Next, we have petitions, 15920 up to and including 16520. They all stand referred to their respective committees and public hearings as listed on the agenda. Counselors, I would now entertain, that concludes this evening's agenda. If I would entertain a adjourn?
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. Counselors, unless there is objection, we will adjourn by unanimous consent. Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, counselors.